All right, welcome everyone. We are now live, there's not a big crew, so. We'll probably wait a little bit, like Steve likes to wait, we've got twelve fifteen people in there. But yeah. Steve, you want to take it from here?
No, I'd like to do it, listen. You will, i- if you're dealing with any. University student, I mean, time is just a concept, right? It's not, it's not something that's hard and written in stone, so. I want to make sure that we give enough time so that everybody, because this is really for the students. Although very thankful for the volunteers that are joining the. Joining this call, but we're up to thirty-three, so we're getting there, yeah. Alrighty. And we'll just keep, we'll just, we'll just keep an eye out for another couple of minutes and then. I don't know, anybody know good joke, anybody, you know, has something one they want to sing, you know, I don't know.
Please don't.
Oh, yeah, I know, Paul, do you want to introduce Scooby? No? Just, we'll hold on for a couple more minutes and. Anyway, did you hear the one? No, I won't do that, I'm just kidding. Well, I will say, you know, as we're, as we're waiting for a couple more folks to, to join along. We're, we're, we're very actively involved right now in, in making sure that we get our. Our sponsors locked down and engaged here. And I want to throw it out to the group, if there are those that are. Working in the industry and potentially think they might be able to. Get us a sponsorship, we are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization dedicated to. You know, the aerospace industry, building a workforce and, and, and doing the education, the STEM education. So if you have any. You have any thoughts or any, any contacts you'd like to share with us, I would really greatly appreciate it. Every, every penny that we spend. Every penny we take in is spent on the event, and so it's not, we don't have any paid employees, so I think it's worthwhile saying that every now and then, so that. Everybody knows and understands that if we are able to get sponsorship, that we're dedicated to making sure that. It goes directly to the students and or this competition, so. All right, we still got a couple strikers.
Steve, we can add in there that several of our new. Sponsors that came in were direct from former competitors. Where, you know, we asked the, the new sponsor, where, where did you learn about the event? And they clearly stated that several of their, their new hires had come on board, had competed and. That, that sparked the interest, so that's really grassroots, that's, that's what we're looking for and. And I mean, everyone that's on here is going to be in the industry very soon. So again, the, the opportunities are there and, you know, even if you can't manage to get your company interested. You're always open to volunteering, we have a huge group of. Recent competitors who are now in the industry working hard and volunteering their time also to Astra and making massive contributions. In their time and efforts and really helping improve the, the overall. Event and, and the organization, et cetera, taking on some key leadership roles, so very important.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, really good point, Andy, and. Yeah, one of the, actually, one of the most gratifying things that. I hear when we are talking to these potential sponsors is, oh, yeah, we've got, you know. Joe and Mary and, you know, Sally from, you know, that have competed in the competition and. You know, I'm really, that, that's the thing that gives us the energy. That we have to, to keep this baby moving forward and getting better and, and increasing the challenge for everybody, so. I'm gonna go ahead, we're about a little over five after and that's certainly within. The amount of grace period I'm willing to give, so, hey, thanks for all, y'all joining this April Town Hall. There's only one more left, right? You know, we're within the sixty day time period and. You know, just a little over sixty days, sixty-two is the number. But, so we're, we're getting down to it, so thank you all for taking the time out to listen and. I just want to get you updated on a couple of, you know, sort of bigger picture things before I, I shoot it over to the team. One shout out to the Technofex people out of Turkey. Who are gonna be sending actually twelve volunteers to this event. And they're gonna participate in, in judging and they're here to do an observation and. They'll actually have some booth space at our convention center to let you know about their international efforts and, and trying to get. Teams to come and participate in Technofest, which is the, you know, we have a number of events around the world that. Sort of taking their model after us and so I just wanted to say thank you to the folks from Turkey. And, and, you know, we'll see them this year and we'll see them in force and so. Thank them, I thank them for being a part, they're volunteering and. And, and trying to boost the international component of, of this competition, their competition. As well as support ours, so say hi to them. One update, we have a large aerospace organization, right? Interested in partnering with us and it's gonna be, we're figuring out the specifics and I'll let you know the name. When, when we have signed contracts and that sort of thing, but. Just know that this year is, we're gonna take potentially last year's. Competition and technical reports and this reports and looking to publish what I'm gonna call the proceedings of. Of the IREC. And so you'll have an opportunity to have your, your work published this year. Which is exciting and we'll let you know, you all know. The organization that we're looking to partner with, but I'm not gonna say the name until we've got things written in ink. Also, a large aerospace media company. Is gonna be coming on board and looking to partner with us, I'll let you know who they are as soon as we. Have our contract sign and that thing, but they're here to promote the event and. And they see the value in what we're doing with the community and want to be a part of it, so I'm really looking forward to that and then. The last thing is be on the lookout for a couple of notifications, we're. Gonna be doing some more podcasts this year and. Looking to make sure that you listen and, and, and take in what. Unfortunately, it's all with me so, so far, so you'll have to listen to me again, but. Really exciting stuff, we're really getting the media ground swell, we're getting the international component really working and the fact that we're gonna be able to. Publish your work. Is very exciting to me and to the organization, so. So any, at any rate, so with that, I'm going to pass it back over to you, Matt, who's gonna throw that, that one page slide up and. Thank you and, and listen, if, if I can ever answer any of your questions or you need to contact me. My contact information is available on the website, happy to listen and happy to respond to you, so go ahead, Matt.
Sounds good, just a reminder to everyone that the, the Q and A is open, you can send in questions at any time throughout the presentation. So far, we don't have anything right now, so if there's anything top of mind, just a reminder that you're always able to send in over the chat. Alright. And like Steve said, this is our fourth time going around, so hopefully folks have enjoyed or found this useful. But we have a few, a few points for today, the FAA cert of, the certificate of authorization. Video flight readiness review, pre-registration and the progress report updates. And I think my. Okay, there we go. We have exciting and great news that we have received the formal FAA certificate of authorization for. The competition this year, this was a long process, back and forth. We'll be sharing some of the details, but we, we have the waiver, as a lot of people colloquially call it, up to a hundred thousand feet, but there are a lot of stipulations. We've been working with the, the launch operations team and the range, downrange crew. We are going to push as hard as we can to launch as early as possible and so know that. We are authorized right now to operate. At as early as we can from sunrise and getting as many flights in throughout the week. And we'll, we'll share more details explicitly, but I wanted to let people know that we have received the formal authorization. For this and it lasts for two years, so a lot of concerns around that front. You know, should be alleviated to, and we're excited to let people know that. This is now official, we have the, have the authorization. And Andy, if you want to talk about video flight readiness review.
Okay, actually, a couple of things, I'm gonna switch the very bottom line item, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna take that one next. So hopefully, most teams are aware, if not all teams, should be aware that Progress Report Three is now active and available as of. Earlier this week, it is the sort of final, it's the final of the progress reports. That are going to be needing to be submitted and it, it really is sort of the critical design review, it's the last remaining. Little red flag issues that may be popping up on the team, so at this point, we're not asking for the full seventy-five to one hundred twenty-five fields of. Every little detail and facet of your rocket, we're really just focused on what exactly. Did your safety reviewer have questions about still and any updates on testing and there are. Several questions that have been added into it, so it's not quite. It is technically challenging, but it's certainly asking a lot of questions about your administration and. And logistics and some of those type of things, you know, do you have your hotels booked, do you have your visas set up, do you have your travel? Airline tickets set, those type of questions are being asked, there should be fairly simple, so it has a relatively small window to complete. But honestly, if, if, if a leader of the student team has most of the information, it should not take them very long at all. As far as the rocket goes, there's only a few specific questions, so it's very important that you finish this as quickly as you can. And again, the deadline for that is April eleventh, so you don't have three or four weeks, you, you've got about a week now at this point to finish it. It, you know, it, it is important that you finish it, get it done as quickly as you can, because the moment you finish it. Submitted, you really should be working directly with your safety reviewer and I'm gonna swing up to bullet point number two. So the video flight readiness review, this is actually part of, of the progress report number three. And this is a, exactly what it says it is, if you haven't experienced one before, they're pretty straightforward, it is a Zoom type conference, teams, whatever. Software system you would like to use, but the student team sets it up, they coordinate with their flyer of record. The mentors that they have, all of your team members. And the safety reviewer, all to meet for upwards of an hour, sometimes as long as two hours. But you have to this time show the rocket to the safety reviewer, they are literally going to want to see. They could very easily come out and tell you point blank, I want to see your electronics bay. Open up your avionics bay, pull it apart, I want to see how the shock cords connect, where are your shock cords, I want to see your parachutes, how do your parachutes connect? And if your rocket is in a situation where it's not anywhere near complete. They may have some significant concerns, at this point with, again, sixty-ish days to go, your rocket should be nearly, you know, I'd say ninety-five percent complete. You should have all the major components ready and just doing some final tweaks. So there may be scenarios where, and we have, have done this in years past, where a team was waiting on critical parts, didn't have an ETA. And the teams were asked to drop, so please don't let that happen to you, your rocket should be. Ready for a very significant safety review with the video flight readiness review, so. We do have a document with significant amount of detail on it and information. That document is hosted on the soundingrocket.org website, so we asked everyone to visit that. I think the link was also in the Hero X announcement, but it's under the technical, or it's under the documents. And forms section, and if you scroll down, it's about halfway down, I think, and it's basically a information sheet. On your Progress Report Three and Video Flight Readiness Review. Take a look at that one, make sure your team's aware of what's gonna happen, send any questions that you have. You can post them on the website, you can post them in Hero X, you can email them to general.info@esrarocket.org. Lots of opportunities, any, any food chain you can send it to your safety reviewer, they may also be able to answer those type of questions, but. You know, please be ready for this and please, if, if the safety reviewer has to come out and, and prompt you to get this coordinated. You're, you're, you're kind of failing, so you should be reaching out to your safety reviewer and making sure that they know when to meet and how to meet and those type of functions. Last piece on this, and this is very critical. Please, 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 record the video flight readiness review. And when you're done, you will need to send me a link to general.info@esrarocket.org. And we're gonna be posting those on our YouTube channel as we have in years past. And all this information's in that document, so you don't have to remember it right here, but please definitely take a look. At that document, so you know what to expect and how to prepare. And from my standpoint, there's one additional update that's not on the bullet points, and so don't worry about it, Matt, this was sort of thrown at me at the last second. Following the completion of the video flight readiness review, DaVinci, our, our mission control center team. Will be sending out their link as they have in years past for the frequency management. Form, and this is a document that's required for teams that are sending or basically any type of radio frequency. That's coming out of that rocket, whether it be telemetry from the GPS or a radio beacon or whatever. Anything that's coming out of your rocket that is considered RF is definitely going to be documented inside that form. This year, the form is going to expand significantly beyond frequency management, they're essentially gonna want your final specs for the entire rocket. There is concerns that when we pull the data from Progress Report Two, which was back in January, a lot of changes have happened since then. So we need a refresh of all the details of your rocket. And that will be included in that, that, that frequency management document coming from DaVinci. You'll be seeing that after the video flight readiness review times. But be prepared for that and that will probably take a little bit of time to, to fill in all those details, but those should be the final specs for your rocket. Again, any questions or concerns, please post them on Hero X in the forums or send them to generalinfo@esrarocket.org or post them in the. Comment section of the sounding rocket website, and I think that is it for me.
Alright, I think that leaves it to Sierra, who, if you want to remind folks about pre-registration.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on one quick comment to what Andy was mentioning about the DaVinci system that's being sent out. Please make sure you fill that out as soon as possible, that information does need to be complete before competition, I'm sure they'll give a deadline, but. If you don't have your information in that system, then you will be held up for registration and the rest of the processes, because that is. Part of a new system of how we're managing you guys going through the line of registration, the flight safety reviews, et cetera, so. Make sure you fill that out as soon as you get it, it's very important, but. Outside of that, pre-registration, wanna start off saying thank you for everyone who has registered already, we have eight hundred twenty submissions so far. Which is over a third of the amount of people we expect to attend the cup, the competition this year. But we have twenty-three teams that are completely full, so great job to those teams. But please make sure that you're still staying on top of your members, your advisors, your flyers of record. Everyone needs to submit, only the students on your team count towards the total. In your team number, I know that I've seen that question asked a few times. So please, in your count of your team size for team leads, only include team members, but. Please make sure that your advisors and flyer records get that form as well, because they have a separate registration. If you remember filling it out, at the end, there's an attendee category, students will select students. But advisors and flyers of record will select their respective roles. Or if they are also a volunteer, they would select volunteer and then in the volunteer section. There will be an additional question asking if they're also a flyer of record or a mentor or what have you. So keep that in mind, make sure you're sending that out, I've seen quite a few flyer records and advisors go through, so. I'm sure a lot of you guys are on the right track with that, but just to remind you, the deadline is April twenty-eighth. I know that it can seem like, okay, well, I've got all this time, so I don't need to worry about it right now, but that time's really to allow you guys. To get all of your members in the Tripoli system, so please make sure that you keep on reminding your team members to. Get their Tripoli account set up and then register as soon as possible, it, it could be easy for them to forget. So just stay on them, I'm gonna keep on reminding you guys. But I appreciate everyone who's registered so far, it's been working out really well this year, so thank you.
Alright, and with that, we go into Q and A. The first one is for Sierra, someone on Instagram is asking, can we pre-register extra students in case some can't make it? How should teams handle that?
So what I would suggest is, you know, tell your members if they might go. Or they might not to prepare their Tripoli membership, so that they have everything that they would need to register if they need to. But don't have them register until you know for sure that someone else is dropping or that you're adding. The reason I say that is because the students that register, I will account for them in our T-shirt orders. And our swag bag packing, so we don't want to pack too many and then have you have not paid for enough tickets. And then run into you buying more tickets at the site when you don't really want more tickets, if you do have members who drop. Just send an email to my registration@esrarocket.org email address and let me know. And I will be able to remove the previous members from your team and then you could have those members register. But please don't register extra people if you're not absolutely sure they're going to go. Because as I said, you don't want to have extra T-shirts ordered and then not have enough tickets.
Alright, great, the next question comes from Anna, the question is, how much space will be allotted for the teams at the convention center? Are we able to have a rocket stand next to the tables?
That sounds like somebody who's been, been to a previous event and. Been elbows and, oh my gosh, we, we do not have that problem anymore, Stephanie, go ahead.
We don't, so yes, there's going to be approximately ten feet of space with the tables. For each team, so there should be enough room to also have a rocket right next to the table if you want. We are going to still try to maintain that people are just walking through aisles and not between. Tables and rockets, but there should be plenty of room for that.
I guess it all depends on, on, so you, you'll have ten feet, so as long as your base is within that ten feet with the table, that's fine.
And just a reminder, if you're just tuning in now, the question and answer is open, you can feel free to just shoot a question at any time. The next question is, what will the process look like for connecting to ingest equipment and testing prior to and during the launch? For the Live Rocket Video Challenge, that's a great question. Cause I can answer it and we will have a table set up with HDMI and SDI inputs. And we will have communications to the, the livestream control center, if you will. And we will be able to communicate back to you. Whether or not we could capture your feed, so. You'll queue at that table there prior to your launch, working with the, the student launch manager, the student team manager. At the viewing area, it's very similar to last year and we'll be able to make sure that we're capturing your feed. Hopefully that answers the questions and the, some of the details about the specific ingest. Requirements are on the Live Video Challenge competition page. The next question is, will DaVinci, will the DaVinci form only be sent out to the team after flight readiness review?
That's a good question, I, I do believe that they will send it out at a single solitary point in time. The goal is to hopefully be after the April eleventh timeline, so it could be potentially before. You complete your video flight readiness review, but nonetheless, they'll give you plenty of time to be able to complete it prior to the, the event itself.
Alright, we only have a few more questions in the backlog, so if you're holding on to something, now's your time to, to squeeze it out and. And let, let us see what you got, the next question is, are there any concerns for the MMR outbreak in the area? This is something that we've been monitoring on the Texas Public Health website. And we are tracking the, it's not currently right in the area where we're hosting the event, but it's something we're monitoring and will communicate. As we work with local health officials in the area. But it, it is something we're actively monitoring. The next question is, what happens if we have changes to our recovery team after pre-registration, should we email? Sierra?
Yes, so two things, yes, you should email me, but also. In the DaVinci form that will be sent out, that will be where your recovery members actually go through their training. So make sure that they are registering as recovery members through that training link. You can always add extra recovery members in pre-registration, that won't count against you or anything, they just need to complete. Their tutorial through the DaVinci site in order to be prepared for recovery. But remember that you can only have four recovery members at a time out at the launch site, so. You can have backups, but just keep that in mind, they need to get that training through DaVinci.
Great, the next question, I'll let Erica take, but it is, what will communications be like with LCO prior to the launch countdown? Will it be done at the pads or back at the containers?
Thanks, Matt, yeah, so I'm gonna answer in terms of teams who are launching single-stage solid rockets first. For those teams, you'll be setting up a bunch of teams all at once will be out at the solids pads, we have twenty pads, so twenty teams will out there being set up. Once all the teams are set up, they will come back to the flight line, there will be a dedicated student viewing area. Where there will be an Ezra volunteer that's in communication with the LCO, so you'll get a quick heads up, but otherwise. If your rocket's out on the pad, you should be up in that student viewing area, waiting until it's your turn and you'll kind of get an indication and be working with that volunteer who's coordinating with the LCO.
Cool. Anna is looking for some, some more detail on the specific dimensions of the table, Steve or Stephanie, do you have this information?
They are six foot table, six foot, you know, rectangular tables, I don't know the width. But they are sort of standard, so I would say maybe twenty inches or twenty-two inches, but I, I know they're six foot.
Yeah, and if I can add in real quick on that one, the, the floor space available to us is significantly larger. The, the whole facility is literally three times the size of the Las Cruces Convention Center. So we do have opportunities for spreading them out a little bit, but as Stephanie said, there will still be rows of tables and those tables will not allow. Any type of going in between the tables, it would just be going through the line of tables, but. Again, there, they won't be stacked up so close together that you'll be rushing up against people at the other table. Again, there they won't be stacked up so close together that you'll be rushing up against people at the other table across from you. Uh, so a lot more breathing space uh to spread out in and uh. Uh, I think once you guys see it, you'll be quite happy. Uh, the parking's phenomenal. Uh, we'll have food trucks. You can bring in whatever food you want to into the. The facility, uh, you know, a lot of the restrictions that we had in New Mexico don't exist here, so. Uh, we're very excited about it uh from that standpoint, and I I know you guys will be happy once you see it as well. The parking is amazing.
All right, the next question is from Christopher. What does the cell service look like at the launch site, or at least how does it compare to Spaceport? Um, there's a few folks who've been out to the site. I think it's better, uh, marginally better, but the. The nature of the cell coverage is that there are some regions with great service and then there's a sharp cliff. Um, and most of the area up on the hill is has. Couple bars, I think from most providers, but. Si- Steve's been out there most recently, Sierra, Eric, if you guys want to comment.
Well, there there's this whole, if you stand on one foot and you hold your arm up. Reception is just a little bit better, but no, it's it's as Matt described, it it there are cells. Uh, there are zones where it's good and there's some zones that it's not. Uh, overall, it's better than what we had at Spaceport.
Yeah, keeping in mind, when you bring two thousand plus people into a small area like that, even if you have great cell coverage. You can easily swamp and overwhelm uh the data side of it, uh, so uh, you know, keeping in that in mind, you may not. May not be able to livestream four K, but uh, uh, again, uh, the opportunity certainly is there and we ask all the teams to. To capture as much video on their phones as they can and and let's see those those team videos get out there cuz uh. That only helps us and will be, you know, make sure you put in those those I rec hashtags so that we can share them out to our our feed.
Yeah, I was out this weekend for the first time. I got to see the site and I use T-Mobile. I would say it's slightly better than. Spaceport America was, but it's still a desert, you know? Um, so I think I had like one to two bars, whereas at Spaceport America, I could do nothing on T-Mobile out there, so. Just kind of a reference for you guys. Don't expect to be making calls all the time, but it's it's a little bit better.
All right, the the next question is from La- LaVenia. Can you, can dual-stage rockets have two recovery teams? Think maybe that's Erica.
Yeah, so generally in inter-standard range operating procedure, we do allow for teams that are recovering their rockets in multiple stages to form. More than one recovery team, um, so that would be, if you have two stages, two recovery teams, up to four people. Per uh team that's going out to recover.
And a similar question for multi-stage teams, is the recovery team maximum four per rocket? Or two per each stage? Or four per each stage, right?
In my experience, each separate stage gets a four-person recovery team. So you guys can look at the same time for separate parts of your rocket.
And just a reminder to everyone who's tuning in, we are uh in the open questions time, so if you have any questions. Uh, feel free to shoot them in. Uh, we only have one question left in our queue, so. Uh, if you've got anything, oh, here comes a few, whoa, my camera. Um, sorry. That was crazy. Um, all right. And the next question is, how tall are the ladders that Ezra will provide on the multi-stage pads? Erica, if you want to answer that?
Yeah, Ezra has uh ladders up to twelve feet tall, so out of the two-stage pads, there will likely be ladders that are between eight and twelve feet tall available for use. Similarly, at the solids pads, there will be ladders um a little bit shorter as well, between four and ten feet there.
Erica, Adam posted a comment in general about two-stage pads. That they will have either an extension ladder that's meant for the pads or a ladder similar to last year's.
Yep, yeah, we do have a few identified in that eight to twelve-foot range that will be dedicated, so a bare minimum will have that. Uh, but like Adam said, they may have some additional ladders available as well.
All right, the next, there's a lot of recovery questions today, and sorry, I think my camera just went kaput live. Um, will a deployed payload have its own two-person recovery team? Erica, I think you were saying, go ahead.
Yeah, um, as called out in our current range standard operating procedure, um, the separate bodies will be able to have separate recovery teams, so if you do have a. Deployed payload that needs to be recovered separately, that would also uh allow for a second recovery team of two to four people.
Everybody that has been through the training, but yes.
Uh, we have a a question, how long will the two-stage launch rails be? Um, a lot of details today, Erica, uh, you might have know this or.
Yeah, yep, um, Adam, the two-stage lead spoke earlier today that the. Are planning on having twenty-foot-long rails for those two-stage and hybrid pads.
Here's a fun one. Um, are there a lot of pump jacks in the area of the launch site? Is there a risk of rockets going out of bounds there? Or other out-of-bounds risks that would delete, that would be bad for recovery? Um, I will say, uh. I see Jim is watching, but he's not tuned in. Jim is the RSO, the Range Safety Officer. Um, has been making sure we are managing our risk extensively, but. Steve or Eric, if you wanted to comment on uh what is out there at the launch site.
Well, there's, there's, there's absolutely no pump jacks. So now, having said that, uh, there are storage containers, you know, so there's. Um, I I did not see any pump jack specific in our area, but there are storage containers and uh. Uh, we all understand the risk that we are in an active oil field. And um. Uh, you know, it it it, you know, uh, the focus this year will be on no ballistic recoveries, right? So, uh, you know, as we as we uh do your video review and as we do your flight readiness review. Um, I think uh even. Uh, so we're, we we want to make sure that everybody's gonna recover because actually that's been the number one issue with college teams. Um, historically. Is that uh they'll have a recovery failure, so I'm asking the Ryu team to actually uh make sure and uh. Absolutely understand the recovery and the electronics used and those connections for the electronics, but uh. You know, it it is an active oil field and that uh there are recovery uh uh tanks. And not recovery tanks, there are uh oils, there are both natural gas and oil tanks. And so uh, uh, the key for us and uh our medication strategy. Stat- strategy is, although I've been assured. That uh, you know, rockets can't do anything to them, uh, it's 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 in our best interest to make sure that. Everybody has had a thorough review of their recovery system.
Jim, I'm glad I was able to get you on there, uh, if you want to add anything to that. Glad to have you on. Oh, you're muted right now, I think. Or, there we go, now we got you.
Okay. Um, yeah, regarding oil facilities, uh, we have done what we can to try to. Work around them from uh each of the pad areas. There's, there's quite a few of them out there though. Uh, and so it's a little bit of a, you know, jigsaw puzzle to try to do that. Um, one of the things that we're gonna try to do is to launch when there's less wind. Uh, you know, the, when we have less wind, we have an idea where rockets are gonna go and as the wind comes up. Uh, we have issues with weather cocking. We we know less about where where rockets are gonna go. So we're gonna try to do that sunrise thing with the rocket launches and so we can. Move as many flights to earlier in the morning and fewer flights later in the afternoon. Uh, which hopefully the weather will cooperate and and that will actually result in less wind when when we launch the rockets. So there's, there's a couple of things that we're doing there. Um. They they are a risk, they are out there, um, and uh, you know, we're just gonna have to deal with them. Um, there was a couple of other questions on the two-stage pads. Um, one of the things that we're in the process of. Doing and we haven't gotten done yet, but we're in the process of coming up with new pads. For the uh two-stage and for the hybrids. Um, that uh will do a couple of things for us. One is to allow us to raise the. Two-stage rockets without having people nearby them because they do have. Uh, additional hazards with the igniters and second-stage motors and we'd like to have. People not have to be under the rocket doing a lift and so hopefully that'll happen. Uh, and if Steve lets me spend a few dollars, uh, one of the things that I'd like to do on rails is to have basically a. Support located maybe two-thirds of the way up the rail that will allow us to lean. An extension ladder against the rocket or against that support. So that uh we can get up higher than we would be able to do with um. Uh, with with a uh step ladder, with a tall foot step ladder, and it'll be safer for people to climb that than it would be. You know, if you're having to stand on the the top step of a step ladder, that's not a very safe thing to do. Uh, and we will not be able to climb these rails, but hopefully we'll be able to get at them with the. Uh, it, you know, a longer extension ladder so that we don't have the. Teams getting surprised when they discover for the first time they can't reach their electronics, which has happened.
So, uh. I am a, uh, obviously it's a face, a safety-first deal here. So Jim, yeah, I I'm in agreement that we need to put those on the uh, on the two-stage pads, so uh, let's go ahead and do it.
We'll do.
All right, the next question is, will the DaVinci form also reserve? Frequencies that teams use to communicate with members on their team while in camp? Is it possible for a sheet to be posted that teams can view and make sure they've. They're not going on, they're going to be on the same frequency. Erica, do you want to take this? I see you've got it.
Yeah, I can take this one. Um, so like in previous years, DaVinci will be interested in all sorts of frequencies that you're planning on using, whether they're in your rocket on the ground or elsewhere. They're trying their best to de-conflict and manage anything and everything. Um, so when you're filling out those frequency management forms and those forms coming in from DaVinci, you're gonna want to make sure that you're noting. If you're using like FRS radios, GMRS radios, um, ham radios, anything of the like there. So that they can assign you a radio frequency. However, um, most just standard walkie-talkies and radios, there's a very limited number of frequency bands that are available. Many less than the number of teams that will likely want to use them, so generally teams will end up overlapping and there may be more than one team. On a frequency band. Previously, teams have just found that they're able to work around it. They're respectful of the radios. Um, so you can kind of consider that. We may or may not end up posting those specific frequencies for the walkie-talkies. We're not gonna make any promises right now. But just note that you should include your intent if you are wanting to use one of those radios. And you should then also know that you may not have a private line, so to say, on that radio.
I have an additional comment to make, so this new DaVinci uh setup that we're releasing this year. The goal of it is to improve our frequency allocation. DaVinci is aware of the issues that we've had in the past. And we won't be able to release a a sheet ahead of the event. Giving you that information because this system will actually work with our entire. System for the queuing and everything, so DaVinci will be getting live information from us about where you are in line. So that they can try to improve your frequency allocation as you're moving through the process. So it will kind of be changing live based on where you are to try to improve. And fix the issues that we've had in the past with frequency allocation.
Yeah, I do want to be clear, the principal focus of the DaVinci system is not team communication, it is rocket tracking, um. So, uh, if there are FRS conflicts, I would just de-conflict those over radio. And say, hey, team, let's shift over. Um, that's probably the best way to handle that. Um, and the next question we have is from Melissa as a continuation of the question. Regarding the motor we purchased through Wildman Rocket Tree. Um, will Ezra provide a specific place for them to hand over motors? Or in general, any other items?
Yeah, I'll I'll answer that one, Matt. Um, so Wildman normally uh will either reserve a. Uh, particular area at a local hotel or some other similar fashion. Uh, this year, we are potentially looking at maybe trying to use an area of the pavilion itself, an outdoor area. Uh, we're still working on the details of that, uh, but nonetheless, uh, prior to the event. All teams that have purchased motors or other items from Wildman will be notified. And told of those details. Once those details are firmed up, we'll also send out a Hero X announcement. Uh, about that because quite often they'll put together a workshop uh on how to build. Uh, those particular motors, uh, and that has been very, very valuable for the teams. Uh, even if you think you have a good understanding of it, it is a fantastic action to to visit with a vendor who's been selling motors for. Long as I've been in High Power Rocktree, which is a long time. Uh, and get their feedback on the best way to ensure you don't have a Cato. Uh, that that will ruin a a rocket team today real quick, uh, so uh, again, highly recommend those workshops.
All right, the next question is, does Ezra have Unistrut rails teams can utilize for multi-stage rockets? Erica?
You know, all of the rails that Ezra provides will be the standard T-slot rails in the fifteen fifteen size, so they're inch-and-a-half-wide rails. Um, you can Google them, you can look at eighty-twenty dot com to see those dimensions. Uh, they're available from a lot of different sources, but you're gonna want to look for those fifteen fifteen rails. Those are gonna be all that is available.
All right, the next question is, how should teams looking to bring their own launchpad work to coordinate pad setup?
I can take that one as well. Um, so for the single-stage solid teams. You should have been indicating that on your progress report so far, and if you haven't been, it should be an opportunity to include that on the third progress report.
There is not. I'm sorry, that was not included.
Um, so if you're, if you haven't previously indicated it, then I'm gonna have you email me. You can email me at solidslead@esrorocket.org. That's so that I can communicate with you, have an understanding of what teams are going to be bringing their own launch rails. And so that I can give you details on when and where you can set them up. Um, those teams will likely not be able to set them up until the morning of the first launch day. But again, I'll be able to coordinate details on a case-by-case basis. For some of the hybrids and two-stage teams that have a little bit more complicated systems, there's an opportunity to set those up on Sunday. Before the competition, but those will also be communicated amongst the hybrid and two-stage leads, so you should work directly with those.
Eric, Erica, that's my fault. Uh, you you asked me point-blank a month ago or more. Uh, luckily, only one team submitted so far, so I'm gonna go in there right now and I'm gonna add that question into the. Into the thing so that we will have that uh for all the other teams, and I'll follow up with that one team that's already submitted.
I know that that team won't be bringing it. It's my former team.
Well, the great job, I mean, first team to submit.
I know, I I messaged them. I was like, oh my gosh, you're the first one to submit.
That's also something that that we can talk about on the two-stage video reviews because the. People that have been doing the safety reviews are the same people that are going to be at the pads. So you can basically talk directly to the people that you'll be working with on that pad setup, which. May may not be the case for other rockets, but it will be for the two-stage ones.
All right, the next question, uh, when can we expect more information on launch queuing updates, Sierra?
Yes, so we are working diligently to improve our setup from last year on the queuing situation. Uh, we actually, as I previously mentioned, I just went out and visited Midland and saw the launch site. So that gave a lot of context to how our setup will be in our mapping and our in. Integration of each of our systems together to improve the flow of the queue. Um, so I will say, let's discuss more in the next town hall. I will give you guys a few slides, giving an update to what we've worked on.
All right, the next question is a clarification regarding the third progress report due date. And the video redo, ready, video review due date. Um, I don't know those off the top of my head. Um. Andy, do you know? Is it?
Wait, that, I'm sorry, that is correct. Absolutely correct. Yeah. Now, again, we're, we're not gonna be hammering you on those video flight. Now again, we're, we're not going to be hammering you on those video flight readiness reviews. Uh, but around that week, uh any teams that have not completed theirs, we're going to at least want a, a, a date scheduled. Uh, so we know that, that teams are wanting to try to finish up the rocket as quickly as possible. Uh, don't extend too far beyond that. Uh, but uh it, it won't be a scenario where you're going to lose points uh like you would during the other progress reports.
Alright, and just to clarify that, because we didn't speak the dates, it's four eleven, that's April eleventh for the third report, which is due. And there's some flexibility around the video review, but it must be scheduled. Do your best to schedule in advance of May sixteen. Um, and the next question we have. Um. Yeah, actually, uh anonymous attendee, do you mind clarifying this? I'm not quite sure I follow. Uh, uh, I rec requires us to have our GPS communication on a rocket. Uh. How will we work with this in our paint jobs? I'm not quite sure I understand how that affects your paint jobs. Um. But ma- maybe you can uh clarify. Um, and just a reminder that, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, I can jump in on this one. So it is out in the detail, I believe, um one of our documents that. Does ask teams to have their frequency numbers written on the outside of the rock. And so understandably, the frequencies are kind of closer to start competition. But that's to allow teams maximum flexibility and have higher accuracy in those numbers that are going to be on the rocket. So of course, don't hold back. I'm painting a rocket just to get the number. A lot of teams will paint it on afterwards. Some teams will write it on with a Sharpie. Some teams just put it on a piece of tape that can be removable or on a sticker that can be removable. So there's lots of options there. Don't let that hold you back on, on getting a beautiful paint job done.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I didn't realize people were painting it on. I thought it was just so, well, everyone was just white Sharpieing it on their rocket. But, okay, my uh, there we go.
Also, I will follow up with DaVinci because I think they may be planning to preliminarily. Set up a frequency allocation and then if they notice once we're going out to the launch pads that there is. Uh, there are two teams on the same frequency, then they might start uh changing frequencies then. So I'll clarify with them just to make sure and we'll post that update once we post this uh. Q and A to the group on HeroX.
Yeah, and just a reminder that uh the webinar is being recorded. We will post the, the video to YouTube. Um, and. Uh, I'll do a better job for this month, uh at being timely about that. Um. So you can uh follow up.
What you do, Matt, we appreciate.
Um, and yeah, if you have any more questions, uh feel free to ask at any time. The next one, uh will there be communication between LCO and the video ingest station before launching? Allowing remote cameras to be turned on. Um. The livestream challenge and the LCO are working in parallel. But uh neither is blocked. No one is. Uh. If you don't have your rocket ready by the time LCO is, is, is going to launch, you might miss the opportunity. Um, that being said, there will be active communication um between the livestream. Um, the student uh team manager uh to make sure that you have GPS lock. So that's a great opportunity to turn your camera on then. And also communicate with the livestream control room uh to make sure your feed is good. Um, so. There will be many steps prior to launching that are great opportunities to turn your, your camera on. If you're, if you are remotely uh powering it on. Um, but. If you fail to use those opportunities adequately, uh you, you may miss the opportunity. Um, because the LCO will, will launch your rocket. Um, the live video challenge will not block a launch. Um, that is sort of the essence of what I'm trying to get at. But yes, there's.
That, that's the bottom line, right?
Um, yeah. The, there will be active communications between the student launch manager, uh the livestream team. Livestream treat steam to teams that are uh in, setting up their livestream ingest. Um, but. It's your responsibility to make sure that the system has been readied. Um, and. If you're out at the pads and we don't have feed, that is not going to be something that stops um a lot from going off. Um, hopefully that makes sense, but there's plenty of times that we'll be able to communicate back and forth um so that you can get ready. Um. And let's see, can you clarify when the thirty-second video introduction is due? Um. I hope, I think we'll, we'll follow up with that one uh um on Hero X. Uh, cause I don't know uh these dates and unless somebody has a schedule up and. Um, don't have a quick answer for you. Um, and let's see. We have a question, uh how is the safety regarding the cities that the event will take place at? Odessa and Midland. Um. I think they're.
You're not sure what you're asking.
I mean, I think they're, they're safe. Uh, Sierra, Erica, Steve, we've all been out there.
Yeah, we have someone that in, in the launch at, in the cities themselves, that, that's going to be handed. Uh, Odessa is not one of the cities that uh will have support services in Midland at the convention center, we will. And out at the Lance, uh out at the launch site, which is out at, by Saragossa, uh Texas, will have. Uh, full support of both uh EMS, fire and, and uh, and security services. Um, so uh, uh, I hope that answers your question. It's absolutely, we have specifically. Dedicated to address uh the support services, which include police, fire and EMS and uh. Rest assured, there'll be support services at the launch site and as well as where we're holding the convention and the award ceremony.
Yeah, to Steve's point, we have a, a pretty comprehensive planning process to make sure that student safety. Um, at the launch site and at the convention center are well managed. Um, but if you have. More specific concerns, you can feel free to reach out.
Yeah, I had one final little comment there. Um, obviously, common sense comes into play in with any city, whether it's Las Cruces or. Or uh, you know, the various middle of Odessa, et cetera. You know, walking out late at night by yourself in a dark corner street, whatever the case might be, not a real smart move. Uh, causing trouble, getting into fights, uh, uh, having issues with alcohol, whatever the case might be. Also, not very smart. Uh, don't create problems. Wherever you go, goes in group. Uh, and uh, you know, focus on what you're there to do. You're, you're there to launch a, a high-power rocket kind of project. And compete well and uh, you know, the city will, will be happy to have you there and. You know, the, again, I hope everyone has a wonderful experience while they're there. Uh, but uh part of that is dependent on you as much as part of them, you know, just be careful. And uh, the, the police department that are there are very much supportive of this. They're going to be well aware of the situation. And uh, you know, they'll be looking out for you, uh but don't go out creating problems either.
Yeah, so just to add to that, I'm assuming when you ask about safety, you're asking about like crime rates in those areas. Because I know I'm planning to go on a trip uh for work soon and I was looking that kind of information up as well. I just did some quick research and it looks like the crime rates are average for an average American city. Um, for Midland and Odessa. And it's very rural, you know, it, there's not a high density of population. In either of these areas. I mean, they're, they're bigger cities for the part of Texas that we're in. But they're certainly not like a New York City, you know, it's, it's not that big. And I would say it's, it's less populated than what you have seen in Las Cruces.
Yeah, I should be the one answering what feels safe. I uh live in San Francisco. I guess everything's a little skewed. Uh, we have a question, will DaVinci handle uh nine hundred fifteen megahertz band? Um, this will be something that will be ca- captured on the form. Um. Steve, were you going to say something there?
You, you mean the thirty-three centimeter band versus the frequency, but um, you know, I, I, again, I'm, I'd, I'd love to. Uh, those are going to be managed by DaVinci in a limited sense. Uh, because they, they can handle the seventy-centimeter band. Um, but they uh, you know, those folks that are transmitting in the nine hundred megahertz range. Or the thirty-three centimeter band is uh, uh, less under their control. And so uh, when you talk about that band, it's, if you're thinking about using the um. Uh, Blue Ravens and that sort of thing, there's going to be an effort to make sure that there isn't any conflicts with that. But if you're doing your own thing in that band, uh, there's no guarantee that uh you're not going to step on somebody or there's going to be a conflict.
Yeah, I think nine fifteen is going to be very, or, or nine hundred. I'm not sure about nine fifteen. I'm, I'm not a radio person, but. There's a lot of featherweight trackers and that's going to be, you know, an issue for. Deconflicting frequencies and so forth. And that's one of the reasons why we're trying to be very aggressive about getting. Frequency information into DaVinci and a process for managing deconfliction. Uh, of those things uh in real time as we're building the queues. So, um, but do be aware that I, I suspect probably. Two-thirds, if not more, of the GPS trackers are going to be in that frequency range.
Alright, and with that, we've reached the last question. Um, and we've come to six o'clock, so uh. If folks are holding on any last questions, uh please, please do ask now, otherwise we'll, we'll wrap up pretty soon. Um. As Steve said earlier, this is our second to last. Uh. Town hall, we'll probably do a very brief one um the week prior to, to the competition. Um, no, wait, sorry. We'll do it in May, definitely one in May, probably won't do the one in June. Um, I forget what month it is. Um. So yes, you'll have a one last opportunity in May to ask questions. Um, and then you can always reach out. Over email, but right now we, we don't have any questions in the queue, so. Um, if you folks have any final questions, uh please use this opportunity now to squeeze them in.
Well, I, I, I don't see any other, so I just want to thank everybody for their attention. Uh, you know, listen, uh, there, there are other forums and you can get your uh, uh questions asked and answered. But uh, I've enjoyed doing this. Uh, I think it's a good opportunity for you all to hear from the team and uh. Uh, I appreciate and thank the team for time and, and uh your uh responses to the questions, so. Uh, I don't see any other, so let's uh, let's call it a night and thank you all.
Alright, thanks, everyone. Take care.
Good night.